To give prayer, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, good morning, guys, and I'm practical, I'm very much impressed that we are having a prayer here. Please keep it going.
Yes.
Keep it going. So probably I will take few minutes and I will do the readings and especially the readings of today that we have in our Catholic Church are just opt up to the community. So eroding from the Acts of the Apostles. The community of believers was of one heart and mind. And no one with great power, the apostles bore witness to the reserve favor was accorded them all. There was no needy person among them. For those who owned property or houses would sell them, bring the proceeds, and they were distributed to need. Thus Joseph, also named by the Apostle Barnabas, which is translated as soon of he owned, then brought the money and put it at the feet of the apostles. This is the word of the Lord. Thanks be to God. So then we will have a psalm, probably you might respond to me, the Lord is king, he is robed in majesty. The Lord is king, he is robed in majesty. The Lord is king in splendor robed. Robbed is the Lord and girt about with strength. So let our response be, the Lord is king, he is robed in majesty. And he has made the world form not to be moved. Your throne stands firm from of old, from everlasting you are, oh Lord. The Lord is king, he is robed in majesty. Your decrees are worthy of trust indeed. Holiness befits your house, oh Lord, for length of days. The Lord is king, he is robed in majesty. Good and gracious Lord, thank you for gathering all of us together here. As the county officials, holding the jobs in different positions, being elected or nominated by authorities or the people, to serve the people that you have entrusted. As yourself say, I come to serve, but not to be soroved. So the purpose of you coming into this world is to serve, serve the needs of the people, take care of the people, show that love and the care. And you did it to the end of your last drop. So also, as you have created each one of us and given us the responsibilities through different ways and means, so that we can be the keeper of our brothers and sisters. Thank you, Lord, for this great position and the responsibility of able to serve one another and for blessing each one of us gathered here, the talents and the skills to be at our best in taking care of our neighbors. So today, we are so much grateful and express our thankfulness for all that you are, for leading us and for guiding us and for nurturing the faith, preserving the faith in each one of us, in our county, in our state and in our nation, and leading us to you. Especially bless us, especially as we are going to make decisions that are best for our community. Every child is precious. We know you love us and you care us. Help us that we may come to our senses and follow in your footsteps. You are the example, you are the model for us in all walks of our lives. Help us that we may look up to you and follow you, you being the master, so that we may be able to give our best in taking care of our neighbors. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we get the meeting minutes from April the 12th, 2020. Do you have you guys had a chance to look at those over and make corrections?
I see no.
Yeah, I see none either. I'm making a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart to approve.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got the meeting minutes from the joint commissioner council meeting from the 12th also of April. You guys have any corrections on that one or anything?
No, I did not.
Motion.
Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, highway department, Chris, morning.
Morning. Well, Father's not here, I guess. I was just gonna say, you guys let me up here and talk and I'm not real professional, but but I always wondered why we had to prayers at the beginning of the meeting and I didn't know if it was just to something we did. But listening to him today to challenge you to be at your best and make the best decisions for the county. I think it hit me a little bit because I don't know if I was at my best earlier this morning with our meeting. Anyways, it really meant a lot. I thank him, but I can't pronounce his name and he's not here, so. I'll tell you guys that. First thing on the projects. I guess last time I stated they were working on the Kembleburg Road, they got the concrete paved both lanes and they got repaired while it was damaged up to little, there's some turkey barns a little north of 200 North, so they got the concrete paved up to there. Thursday, they're hoping to do the bituminous, which is the asphalt shoulders on the buggy lanes. Right now, they're they're dressing up the rock on the buggy lanes and they're gonna start with the blacktop and catch that up. And north of there, they're doing grade work hoping to start paving again and concrete paving in June. So right now, that's that's about as far as they are and they're they're wanting to get the driveways and everything completed on the south section. I guess a little bit under projects, some good news and bad news is we got the the information from NDOT on the Community Crossings Grant that we applied for, the 2022 dash one for the Montgomery Bridge project. They awarded us a million dollars to do that project, which is is very good news. The bad news is we're probably not gonna start it till 2023 with getting everything in line and make sure when we when we start, we'll be able to see it through completion in a timely manner of eight months without having longer delays and trying to do the bulk of the construction during the two short summer months that the kids are out of school. So and with part of that, to to be able to sign stuff, we talked about some ducky sign and stuff with the with the commissioners. There's a whole process of signing documents back to NDOT to acknowledging that you've got the grant and you need to grant and and I think it kind of last time we had a little bit of trouble with that because they were changing from hard copies or wet copies, whatever you call them, to ducky sign copies. And then they had an email wrong. What NDOT would like, would they would like to have one single signature signee. And what I would suggest or propose is that we can pass a res- pass a resolution or just documenting our meeting minutes and I can turn them into NDOT for one person to be the legal signer of NDOT LPA contracts and CCMG agreements. And and I would move that we would make that to the county superintendent without specifically naming any names. And then that would be done and then each year NDOT would send you a paper and all you would have to do is send back our resolution that we made or a copy of our minutes and probably have to put on there who the legal signer is. But our our resolution or our our minutes would just state that it would be the the highway superintendent's position would be the legal signer or the agreements. And the agreements, he wouldn't be signing anything that wasn't already agreed upon with the commissioners and I guess, I don't know, I'm missing some words there, but.
Still need to bring to the meeting too, yeah.
Yeah, new trucks for the superintendent.
We would, the superintendent wouldn't, he wouldn't be signing anything that wasn't already agreed upon and applied for from NDOT to receive. It would just be some acknowledgements that we're giving this to you. Do you still want to do it, you know, or or whatever?
I know the last time, that's that last grant we went through, it was kind of a rigmarole to get all that ducky signed with everybody and I know they had, they had Ron's email messed up, so he wasn't actually receiving the even that document too, so.
They canceled it, you know, at one point they canceled it.
Yeah.
And I think Nathan got had a coronary when they canceled it.
Oh, in the bridge, yeah.
And it wasn't the bridge, it was the Glendale Road. And it's it's hard to tell.
Oh, that was a Glendale.
Because they they send them out and I think I told you guys, they send them out and they've got, you know, Davis County has a number, Indiana has a number, this agreement has a number, so you get a paper with a bunch of numbers on it. And unless you know what the numbers are, you don't know what you're what you're signing. And then I don't know that they send that to you guys. I don't get no acknowledgement from them. So I don't know how we do this from here, but.
I think we do need to streamline this.
So you so you want to make it easier by taking the three of us out?
Out of it, so he gets, he gets away.
Smart, that's a smart superintendent.
Something like that.
I think it's a great idea.
I think we need to figure out a way to streamline this definitely because it's it's the way it's been coming through, it's been.
A little hodgepodge and yeah, we don't know which one we're signing, if it's the bridge or if it's the Glendale.
Or whatever, yeah.
It's it's a little confusing.
Patty's got a question.
So the only question that I have is on the final signed documents, the auditor's office does need a copy of that for the grant reporting that we have to do for the federal grant, so that's the only thing that, and once he's, if he's given that authority to sign it, once he gets that, will they then send us digital record or a hard copy or what will we have?
Well, I haven't made it that far yet, but but they
Make a note.
We didn't sign anything yet. They sent us the award last Tuesday, I believe. But we've got to send them back the signatures and then they'll send us the official paper, I guess, a congratulatory letter.
So just at some point, our office will need a copy of all the signed documents.
On the ducky sign, no, if you log into, I think you would, you'll be able to download a copy of what you signed.
Yeah.
If you do that, just forward it on to the auditor's office then.
And I I haven't, I didn't sign up for the ducky sign yet or anything. I just thought I'd.
Think what you do and you get a user password or anything, I think you should be able to be able to download that, what you signed, you'll be able to download it.
But do you need a resolution from us then?
It said, it says in here that the the LPA, which is us, can just pass a resolution or document meeting minutes for one position to sign NDOT LPA contracts and CCMG agreements. So I guess we can do it in meetings, but I do have a copy of a resolution that I would have to give to Grant and he could fill in all the information.
If you want to give that to Grant, so he can look it over.
If you want to do it that way.
That's a copy of what the resolution was. You guys have any more feedback on on that?
No, I mean, the more we streamline it, I mean, as long as we're all in the loop.
Yeah.
Which on these we would be because, I mean, we'd be approving the project, right, that we apply for, so.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be approving a project, just kind of some acknowledgements back and forth that that we received the money and.
Go moving forward. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Guess we'll look for a motion to approve. I guess it'd be a single signature with the highway superintendent.
Yes.
Sign LPA claim vouchers and and grant, like the CCMG grant monies from the NDOT.
Yes, so moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Some other, I don't know, some other projects, I guess the under the projects, the the CCMG grant that we received, I guess it was at the end of last year, the 2021 dash two for the Glendale Road project, they came in and they're wanting to start paving May 6th. We haven't got a finalize on that. That's that 12 mile stretch of road from Highway 257 to going east through Offordsville to County Road 1300 East.
Right.
To join up with the, I guess, would that be Green County there?
Mark, Mark County.
There, yeah, had to think about that. I'm just kind of a one county guy. So they're they're wanting to start that and we do have a little project we had talked about earlier. They're at 1050 East and the 700 South intersection.
Right.
We've got some engineering designs to cut the hills down and and make that a safer intersection. So we may be addressing that with you guys as a whole later, but but we do got some plumbary engineering done on it and now we need to make a couple of decisions and move forward with that. We'd like to get it done before the paving comes through, but don't look like that's gonna happen.
Not getting them passed enough.
Yeah. So that's it for the projects, the LPA claim vouchers. I've got one here for Kembleburg Road, phases four and five from Davis County Rural Water. I guess I'll present that. Do you like to read it?
All right, we got a LPA claim voucher here from Davis County Rural Water for Golden Kemble Road, phases four and five, in the amount of $63,457.75 with an 80% reimbursable of $50,766.20. Look for a motion to approve with a single signature.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay. I guess he is a 2021 annual report. I'd asked you guys earlier, I guess you've got that in your packets and I don't know what I'm supposed to do with it. Supposed to ask questions or go through it, but I got a copy of it in front of me.
Have you guys had a chance to review that?
Yeah, I did not have any questions.
You any questions, Ron?
No.
On the annual report from the highway department? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last thing on there is the notice for bid for a tandem axle dump truck and I actually do not have a copy of that. I guess I'm supposed to read that out by all?
Yeah, do you?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of it? Okay.
We have a copy of it in the auditor's office.
You want me to go ahead and read it then?
Yeah.
Okay. So the Board of County Commissioners of Davis County will receive sealed bids until 9:00 AM Eastern Standard Time on May 10th, 2022 in the Commissioner's Room, Davis County Government Center, 300 East Heffron Street, Washington, Indiana, 47501, for the following equipment. One 2023 or newer 66,000 pound tandem axle dump truck. The specifications are in the, for the bidders, per said equipment are in file, Davis County Highway Department, 5247 East 100 North Montgomery, Indiana, 47558. All bids must be accompanied by non collusion affidavit and a bid bond equal to 10% of the bid price. The Davis County Commissioners reserve the right to reject any and all bids. I guess that's going out.
Yep, sounds good.
I believe that's all I've got unless anybody's got any questions.
You guys have any else for Chris?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, I guess the one, yeah. One thing, we got obviously a lot of projects going on and we meet at the highway department beforehand.
Yeah.
So Chris made a comment on the my way out that it'd be, because we are, we get to like 8:15, 8:20 and then we're, you know, we start shifting gears a little bit. But to have a meeting where it's just on a separate day where we go out and meet and then we don't have anything afterwards.
Yeah.
So, but we need to advertise for it.
Right.
I mean, so I I've got a couple of dates and times written down, not to put anyone on the spot, but because in in May, maybe the first or so, second week in May, go and get a date, because if we don't do it today, then we've, it's gonna be, you know, pushed.
Right.
Down, you know, so I don't know if your calendar is, how they look on May 5th or May 9th.
But my calendar's open and and I know
Okay.
when I first started this, we were meeting twice a month.
Yeah.
In front of these meetings.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying we need to, that that was a mistake not meeting twice a month, but I think there's some issues and some things that are going on that we need a little bit more time to address with all three of you guys or me. So once a month is still fine, but you know, you guys are coming in ahead of time and you got a meeting and I talk a lot.
Well, I love your idea because it allows us to focus and we've got, you know, probably four or five pretty major projects going on, which is, which is awesome.
There there's a lot of little details that maybe don't get discussed or get slipped through the cracks or we are talking about other things and we're getting geared to go to this meeting and maybe we don't pay enough attention or whatever, so this way it keeps us all on the same page a little bit. Spend a little bit more time, if we're gonna work together, you guys are leading me on what I'm doing, then I think we need to spend a little bit more time together.
All right, or we just want to do a couple special meetings, what you're saying?
No, just like one, with this one meeting.
Okay.
And and then we'll, that meeting will determine, do we want this on a?
Either one of those dates work for me, as long as it's early, early in the morning.
May 9th at 7:30?
7:30.
I'll have to check. I think it's okay, but.
Okay. Do May 9th, 7:30, Chris, is that too early?
That works.
Okay, so could we advertise, it'd just be a special highway meeting? So for May 9th, 7:30 at Highway Department and then if we'll hear back from Ron, if that date changes, then we can just communicate that date change to.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Awesome, no, thanks for bringing that up. It's a great, great idea.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We did have a highway meeting this morning at the highway department. I forgot to mention that earlier. All right, we got 2022 Indiana Action Plan, owner occupied rehabilitation program. Jenny Derwater, is she here?
Michael, I think that's just a draw on the, that's that rehabilitation on the housing that's been ongoing.
Yeah.
This is just a draw request. We have the documents in our office. It's just a formality to let you know.
Right. Just FYI today? All right. We're not drawing anything down today though, right?
We have the request for those documents. The money's probably in the bank. We've been notified and we'll make those disbarcements.
Okay. Got the annual community corrections grant application, Diana Snyder.
Morning. I'm here a little earlier this this time than normal. They're trying to get the process started a little earlier, so not knowing exactly what the council's gonna recommend for wage increases or such, I just kind of went by what happened last year and used it. If that's not what happens, then I will re be revamping the budget, but we had hoped that they would be more streamlined with June, so we knew what what was happening. This is the same grand amount that we were awarded last year. It is now run on a yearly fashion that it has been for the last couple and this is our 40th annual grant submission.
That's a lot, yeah.
Yes. That we've, that Davis County has done since 1983, so this is our 40th. So I am just here today to ask permission to submit that. Of course, everything is being submitted electronically. The things that I shared with you all in an email. So everything will be scanned in and sent electronically. Not for sure when the date coming back will be. Usually they come back, we revise the budget a little bit and then resend it for submission, but we were asked not to request for any additional dollars, no additional funding from the state at this point in time.
Keep it fee flat then, okay?
Yes.
You guys have any questions for Diana?
No, thank you.
If not, look for a motion to approve the the community corrections grant.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I have some documents, so I need to.
Sign too. Thank you very much. Have a good one. I got the health department ticket, fee ticket, 2022. Morning. Okay.
Thought she'd be right over, but she's in a in an exam room. We we presented the fee ticket, the updated fee ticket to the health board last week and I think it should be in your packet.
It is, yeah.
Kathy explained it that with all things inflation, vaccine is not immune, ironically. So flu vaccine being very, and here she comes, so she can explain it better. I was just explaining about the fee ticket.
I put you on the spot.
Just mentioning that we had presented to the health board and the reason you gave.
So all of our prices have gone up. So what we do is we are in a buying group for vaccines. Actually, there's one from the state, which isn't very good, and then there's one on our own. So we are in a physician's buying group. We get discounts and always looking for the cheapest vaccine. And then we look at our top two insurance companies to see their reimbursement for vaccines and then that's how we set our prices so that we don't lose money. We're not in the business to make money, but we do have to cover some supply cost and excise taxes when the vaccines are shipped. Unfortunately, they all went up except for one and it was a new vaccine and they estimated really high, but it came in a little cheaper than what they were estimating.
You guys have any questions for?
No, I did not.
Ron?
No.
All right, look for a motion to approve the 2022 fee schedule for the immunizations.
So moved.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, you guys are still on the agenda here for the for the health department canopy.
Where you want me to start?
I'm not, I just, I think I mentioned somebody about a canopy, but I don't, at the last meeting, so go ahead.
I had caught Mike and and just mentioned lessons learned after running full-time clinics out of the health department. We're not really short on space. We're we're really just short on waiting area or or area when we have a lot of patients in that front room or the front door. I think you've all probably been in there. No major issues, just looking ahead and seeing that we have some options of of placing that canopy or some overhang. that canopy or some overhang. I, I talked to Larry Dawson not that long ago about what that might look like, because it is such a, and there's lots of concrete and some specialized things that would need to be considered. So I asked Mike to come take a look and, and maybe consider that canopy that was once planned there or something there like it.
The original, I mean, remember the original drawing, this building had a canopy over that elevation out there, then we changed the ADA compliance for this, got rid of the steps and stuff, and that changed the elevations and the canopy went away, but I, that, that opening that door over there is not protected in any way, shape or form for anybody standing or waiting or anything like that. And then, I know when they get busy and doing a lot of shots and stuff, you guys actually do a lot of those outside too, and you could actually set up, set up underneath there and have a workspace under a canopy out there.
We've done all COVID testing outside since last, last July.
Yeah.
Golly.
And I did, after I talked to Kelly, I did reach out to RQAW two and just see if there was a possibility of be able to, we can't skew it to the building, it'd have to be skewed to the ground. So there, there is some options we can do with that, and I don't know what we'd want to spend on if we choose to move forward with it, but we'd probably get some pricing to see that where we're coming at before we made the decision on a hundred percent. I didn't know what you guys felt about it, if you was even interested in doing something like that.
And I guess my hope is, you know, that things will get back to normal and volume will increase. If we, we need it, then obviously we need to look at it. What we get into.
Yeah.
The stone ply and all that stuff, and it's not connected, but then somehow there's water runoff, you know.
Yeah. There's, there's, it's going to be a challenge, whatever we do over there, because there's, we got a complete curtain wall that runs down that.
Yeah. Yeah, the issue we have, getting that thing put in, so, so what's the purpose of, what's the why, what's the purpose of the canopy?
Um, as I started, we do, even, even with the slower clinics, we do have some sort of a bottleneck there at the door, and we have people outside every, every day at some point, we, we prop the door open a lot.
So just.
And we do a lot of things outside as well, in regards to test, like I said, testing or other things that we, we like to have some things outside, some clinics, it's just easier for flow, so.
So how big of a canopy are you talking about?
Well, if, if you're asking me, it's going to be rather big, but I understand, out, out to the sidewalk, out to the edge of the park.
There's restrictions out there where we could build it, how we could build it, so it's not going to be in math, I'd say probably thirty by thirty or less would be my estimate. It'd have to reach beyond the sidewalk so we're not into the ice melt.
And is this for people to, to stand?
Yes, protect from the weather. Right.
Yeah.
Just something to look at.
Look at and, and.
Yeah.
I'd reach out and.
I'm definitely not against it, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around, how many times do we have standing room only? So they.
Our front, our.
They don't wait inside?
Okay, so our front section where, where people wait.
The waiting room's not, it's not adequate.
There's three chairs separate or there's four together, so we can hold four people, and that's.
Okay.
One family, and we schedule about every fifteen minutes plus the death and the birth certificate. So we, we've shifted an office around to move people into an office temporarily, but for waiting, it is, it is.
Yeah, so there's four people can wait at the time, so.
Yeah. But what, but the larger events, you're correct, those, those are fewer and far between, it's more of a space need for waiting and protection from the weather, because we do have a significant amount of visitors that.
Yeah.
Walk and drive.
Right.
So, just a thought, if, if I mention it to Mike for something to consider and if you'll.
I could reach out and get it, if it's something we would, you know, entertain the idea, I could reach out and maybe get something brought up and maybe get a price on what it would cost to install it.
I've had the misfortune of using the health office when it's been pouring rain, they need something out there. Not to mention that it's, it's the front door to the Health Department and still a lot of people come in this door, but it would help differentiate that a little bit. I'd, I'd check into the price and again, don't want to go wild, but I think it needs something.
I could reach out and get some loan ready.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure if we, you know, if we do it, that we have a three hundred and sixty-five day solution, and you know, if it's pulled, pulled out, right, people are going to still be pulled, I don't know. Okay, I, I'm not, I guess we probably need to look at.
Okay.
But then, you know, they, yeah.
I'll reach out and try to get some numbers and, and just maybe a generic drawing of what it could look like, and then have it back at maybe, maybe not the next meeting, but maybe the following meeting.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, let me know how I can help.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Are we at Architect for Courthouse Renovation? Morning, Dan.
Good morning. Appreciate being with you all again this morning. As you all know, we've made considerable progress to the point where I think we have a scope of work in general concepts, but we can't go any further without an architect engaged. You all asked us to review the work that RQAW had done previously, and if there was some transfer to that, we believe that answer is yes, there is considerable transfer value there. We also have reviewed their team profile and we requested they make some assignments relative to historic architects that they have on staff that we have not seen yet, which they've agreed to do. We sent you their proposal, Laura Dawson, who was with us this morning, and Kevin Meyer from RQAW. Garmon is recommending as your construction manager and your project consultant that we retain this morning, select RQAW to do this project, subject to contractual review by Garmon and County Attorney, Forson Trooper and Stephen Jones from Ice Miller.
Okay. Anything else for Dan on that or anything?
No, sounds good.
With Dan's recommendation, look for a motion to hire RQAW for the courthouse renovations, pending a review of the contracts from Garmon and Grant on the hierarchy AW.
And Ice Miller.
And Ice Miller, yeah, yeah. The Ice Miller review, V O two with Stephen Jones, yes.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second, all in paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right, thank you, yeah.
I'm sure RQAW processes.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Thank you, thanks, Dan. All right, we got the capital asset inventory ordinance, have you guys had a chance to review that?
Mm-hmm.
Anything stands out to you?
Settled on the four thousand dollars or more.
That's what it was, yeah.
On fourth.
Capital asset level had been established, we're not asking for a change on that, I think council agreed four thousand still on capital assets, the change is in the writing of the amount for the inventory. Missy is the one that took the lead on that, based on the joint meeting and made recommendations. I think there were some particular items at the council or wanting to track as far as inventory. No one wants to make this a complicated micromanagement issue for sure, and most of all, the Auditor's Office doesn't want to do that, but we do have the need and the necessity to get this done quickly, just for the fact that we're already into almost to May and each department has to get their records updated for twenty twenty-two.
It looks like anything thirty, three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars or less, and then more than five hundred, right? And that's what.
With the, I think the language in there shows that, and then with those carve out for those special items.
Okay. Guys have any more questions on that?
No.
If not, I'd like to get a motion to approve the capital assets inventory policy.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second, all in paper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Michael, the other option on that, once this ordinance is established, we will work with data pit stop is, who will help us on that software for the asset management.
Right.
So we will set it up for training for each department, we'll put the ordinance out to them and then we'll set up training for them, but just ask for their cooperation in getting that training done and commissioners to encourage that they take on their full responsibility there.
Yeah. All right. 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 All right.[1351.32]
They're wanting to restrict it, so that's the question.
I would say, yeah, there's probably some, with, with lab, with, just with the whole lab industry, there's so much excess cost in a system, so they've clearly identified a source, so I would say yes, and if we run into any issues, we can
Restrict it?
I'd say yes to restricting it, that's what they suggest. But if we have any of our employees who have any issues with it, then we, we see specifically what's the issue.
Case by case.
But there's a lot of abuse in the lab industry currently.
Hey, look for a motion, is that a motion then?
Yeah, so moved, I'd accept their recommendations.
Okay. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second, all on, all on paper?
Aye.
Motion carries. Blighted properties.
Okay, but we're getting to the end of the road on this one, so, which is good, it's been a lot of good teamwork, a lot of great discussion. And, um, you know, if we move forward, great, and if we don't move forward, you know, that's, that's okay too, so. Um, so Matt Meredith, Marilyn McCullough and I met on April twentieth, just to discuss the city's, um, counter proposals
Right.
that they had. Uh, we reached back out to the city and were told that, um, they, they were not planning on adding any additional staff, that they were just basically doing with their current staff. Um, after some discussion, we just had a little bit of concern as far as just availability of time. I mean, we're looking for this position to have twenty to twenty-five hours a week
Right.
devoted, uh, to this project. And, um, we didn't feel that, that, that would probably be realistic with current resources. So, um, what we would like to propose and is that we feel having a contracted employee, um, that works on behalf of the county, but then insert them theoretically in, with the city of Washington as far as training, you know, not necessarily oversight, but being a liaison. Uh, but they report directly to the county. So basically, we tell them what to do and then the city tells them how to do it. Um, if, if that makes sense, because we want to follow the city's process.
Right.
There's a lot of benefit in for the city because obviously there's a lot of, um, properties in that two-mile radius that need to be cleaned
That's one of our biggest
That need to be cleaned up, that the city of Washington can't do anything about, so. And then obviously we'll look at the, uh, we'll start with the first quarter of a mile of each municipality and then the half, and then we'll just determine, is that far enough? And then all high visibility areas.
Right.
So the main highways, crane, um, so those would be the designated spots. So the basically, if we hired this person full-time, because I know sometimes the, the contract amount, like, um, if we prorate it based off what Knox County pays, our contract amount would be thirty-five thousand dollars for twenty to twenty-five hours a week. So people automatically say, or jump to, well, that's seventy thousand dollars a year salary. Well, if we hired someone full-time and paid them forty thousand dollars a year and provided benefits and a car and a phone and office, it's gonna be seventy thousand dollars plus office space if they get paid forty thousand dollars a year in salary because of all those hidden costs. So this is, is it's not a seventy thousand dollar a year salary. So maybe it'd be a thirty-five thousand dollar, all-inclusive, the person provides car, benefits, cell phone, office space, everything. So our, our proposal would be to move forward with a contracted employee and a range of thirty, thirty-five thousand, maybe it's thirty thousand, it, it's in that ballpark. Twenty to twenty-five hours a week. And our, our thought would be that we'd coordinate it with the city, they'd be even involved in the interview process. And then when we hire this person, the city trains them with our supervision. Um, they identify the properties, those properties come to the commissioners for final checkoff to make sure it meets our specs, right? Because I mean, we want to make sure it's reasonable.
Right.
Um, and then this would be a year-to-year position.
Okay, so that's what I was gonna ask, if you're a contractor.
Any yearly contract where if we see we're not getting our ROI, we feel, and we don't have numbers to prove it, uh, because it's just, we would get into a state of paralysis by analysis if we tried to start vetting this thing out. If we clean up some of these major properties, one, we feel that that's going to increase the property taxes eventually generated by those properties by cleaning them up, perhaps. Um, or the worst case is, the best case is going to obviously eliminate the eyesores of Davis County that are, that are being, that are embarrassing, that people don't want to move to those areas.
Right.
They don't want to buy properties around those areas. So these properties are affecting the land values of properties around them, so. So we feel that there's a lot of secondary and tertiary impacts, because we're, we're not, we, we would not be agreeable to, to raise the fees to pay for this, because, you know, you're, you're building a barn and now you're paying another eight hundred dollars for a permanent fee.
Right.
If you ten cents a square foot, so. So anyway, um, we're kind of at the end of the road where the commissioners need to make a decision on what direction, any, we want to go, so.
I don't have any, any, uh, issue hiring a contracted position like that. Um, just have to figure out exactly what that number is.
Mm-hmm.
You know, make sure we get our best bang for our buck. But if it's an annual contract, I think we could always negotiate that at the first year and he doesn't spend twenty, twenty-five hours a week and it's forty hours a week or ten hours a week, you know, we, we could, we could adjust that the next year.
And this would be monitored monthly, quarterly as we go forward. If we see this person spending five or ten hours a week, we're gonna say, look, you gotta, you had to devote more time.
Time, yeah.
I mean, so there would be minimums that they'd have to spend or else that'd be part of
Part of the contract, maybe.
Part of the contract, yeah. So, yeah, we really would mirror Knox County's contract and then we can tweak it, obviously, so.
Any suggestions?
I have, I have no issues, but I think the first thing to do is get an ordinance in place so we know exactly what individuals are gonna be doing. Is it gonna mirror the city's ordinance?
So is that, probably so, it's a mirror, it's, it's gonna look very much like the city's ordinance. John Casper's already kind of gave us the steps that we need to follow. Um, if we decide we're moving forward with this person, then here's the ordinance you need to be, needs to be passed. So we would, he sent us a copy, which, um, we all should have in our inbox, but again, it's pretty wordy. So obviously, if we decide we're moving forward, then the next step is, okay, we need to look at that ordinance at the next meeting and, and tweak it for the county to make sure that we're not, we don't want to come in and blitzkrieg with the county, right? I mean, we want to be reasonable, so.
It's an unsafe building code, is that what, is that what we're referring to?
Unsafe building, junkyard, is what I mean.
The cit, the cities, they, they, they're able to do it, so I mean, if they could do it, we should be, be, be their, their ordinance to be able to do it ourselves, yeah.
There's a generic Indiana code section relative to unsafe buildings and many communities have approved that sort of heart blanche, so we can do that, we can use the cities, I mean, we have
We have the cities, we have Knox Counties, but basically it's gonna be unsafe buildings and trash.
Yeah.
Um, that's theoretically like the junkyard up on two thirty-one, um, just south of Crane.
Right there, right there.
There may not be an unsafe building there, but you got
Hot visibility, yeah.
It's a junkyard, right, so. And we have a junkyard ordinance, so that'd be another thing, if we don't move forward, we need as a renowned
I guess on the junkyard ordinance too, I guess we need to in that ordinance, need to spell out what they need, if, if they're gonna maintain a junkyard, how they need to maintain the property, I guess.
Which is in that junkyard ordinance, so there, so basically junkyard ordinance, unsafe buildings and trash would all be
How does it handle weeds and overgrowth?
That'd be up to us to determine, um, how much do we want to, um, they have a phrase in this city, grass, trash and something, I don't know. That's what we'd have to talk about, is on
Yeah, I, I think we should move forward with it. Devil's always in the detail, we may, it starts with the ordinance, so.
But the three of us would be determining that, whereas if we, and I really appreciate the city's offer, um, but if we went that direction, then we, we can't have them change their ordinance.
Right.
But we can change ours, so. So to me, the trash and the buildings is the top two priorities and then obviously grass, it's a certain degree. We, if it's over eight inches, you're not gonna be getting
No, I
But if it's three feet
Actually, you know, I really don't care about grass, but when you start getting into weeds and shrubs and stuff like that, where it's unsafe, that's what you need. There, I mean, there, farmers always have to take care of weeds even on roadside, so
I mean, I don't live, I, I live three miles away from the nearest trashy part, property and I don't have to see it or live with it. So I don't know how it feels, but I'm sure if you live near it
Beside it, yeah.
You're, you're probably a little frustrated, right, I don't know, you're putting money into your stuff, so. So that'd be thirty to thirty-five thousand, twenty to twenty-five hours is the, the ranges. And then once we start interviewing people, obviously, we'll, and that's, if, if they come back, it's fifty thousand, the minimum's one we can find, then obviously this thing's done.
Done, yeah.
So, but that'd be the ranges we'd work, work on. I would suggest it'd be Marilyn, Matt, myself and, and just a representative from the city as the interview panel.
Yep.
And then we'll work with Patty to get the ad out. Start getting people in.
I think Knox County has a separate board that he points to, but we're gonna keep the, or the commissioners?
I think we do for the, the beginning, um, they, I mean, they did it for, you know, reasons that made a lot of sense, you know, they didn't want it all coming to them and I, I, I just thought about it a little differently, I thought, well, I want us to get it fine-tuned.
Right.
And then if we get a board
Right.
and then we're the overall appeal body, right? And then we can, maybe one of our existing boards. The devil will be in the details, but, but the overall purpose is right now, it just feels frustrating when we have these properties and we're like, we don't know what we can do. At least we'll have a person that can tell us what we can do, you know, try it for a year. Just want to renew the contract. We'll all be around for at least two more, two more years after this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the, the contracted employee to monitor, to oversee the blinded property.
And, and for grant work on ordinance, right?
Yeah, and that, yeah, and, and which will be part of that, so yeah, and, and the creating the ordinance.
Okay, got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second, all on, all on paper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Matt and Marilyn.
I know you've spent a lot of time on this and I think those guys have too, Marilyn and Matt, so
Yeah.
appreciate all the time.
You're welcome and thanks to the city for their offer, obviously, we're gonna be working hand in glove with them, so.
Right. All right, Mid States Corridor, um, they've got public meetings coming up Tuesday, April twenty-sixth tonight at West Gate Academy and Thursday, April twenty-eighth, the Jasper Arts. And then they've actually also asked us to post these, uh, in the, in the county building, which I think is fine. Guys have any issue with that? It says corridor for the brochures.
Issues?
All right, that's all we have for the agenda, I think Patty's, you're up.
I have an announcement to make to, um, Davis County Board of Commissioners. I have a letter to present to you. Elected position of county auditor is an Indiana constitutional office and is term limited. My time of service ends by Indiana Code December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. It's been my privilege and honor to have served as a Davis County auditor since being elected and taking office January first, twenty fifteen. It's a very challenging, yet rewarding job and I'm forever grateful for the many opportunities for growth, both personally and professionally. Now, if I could just read this without being emotional, right? Please accept this letter of resignation as a Davis County auditor with my last day to serve is Friday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. As I prepare to leave, um, I pledge to, uh, continue to serve the taxpayers of Davis County. All right. And also the next county auditor for a smooth transition of duties. Um, I want to formally thank my staff, very dedicated and hard-working group. They're a great team and I wish them continued success in their service to Davis County. Um, I've been very proud to represent Davis County across the state. And I think the leaders of our counties, both past and present, who've excelled in like, making Davis County one of the best of the state of Indiana.
Patty.
Make a motion to decline the letter?
Is he hearing that? That's what I told her on the phone.
Wow.
Thank you, Patty, for everything you've done. Been there from, I don't remember where you started the county, but you've been there for a while and I've been there the entire time I've been there and I've really enjoyed working with you. I think we became pretty good friends over the years and
I didn't think it'd be that hard to read that letter.
Some of my job without you, I tell you that, because we've had some rough roads to go through and I appreciate everything.
Yeah, absolutely, my wife has a common phrase, she says, not my circus, not my monkeys, but these were your monkeys. And, uh, you, you corralled us really well. So yeah, you did a great job. You obviously represented Davis County really well.
Thank you.
And I think you had dark hair when you started.
I did.
Sorry for whoever next, next in line, you know.
My hair was dark, or yours when I started too, I think.
Right now, I just, I've always appreciated working with you, obviously, we go way back, um, and, uh, you know, you, even when we disagreed, you, you were not disagreeable, so. Appreciate, appreciate that, uh, respect and you taught me a lot, so best of luck in your, your next chapter, chapter of your life.
Thanks, Patty. All right, anybody else have anything to the commissioners? If not, look for a motion to, uh, pay payroll, pay claims and adjournment?
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second, all on, all on paper?
Aye.
Motion carries.